I'm Mr. Work in the corporate world and I've been consulting for Ryan Harper.
Not your average.
And what's this way you get that? Oh, I did it every day.
It's a lot. It's like I wake up.
Christmas Eve gets around.
It's uh 10 p.m. and I'm still working.
I'm getting retired with I'm getting to get up every morning, get dressed and get out of the house.
Artist, musical artist.
And that's what I was having to do. I didn't like that.
And that's what I like about the house, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I I work from home if I'm not traveling. But then I I gotta go to Pittsburgh on Tuesday.
Oh, oh, yeah. It'll be on Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
It'll be up. Because it'll be a big travel day.
Yep. And the only flight in and out of Pittsburgh is now, so come back, it's gonna be eighteen.
I don't fly my little area right through.
Um, staying over. So I come back Wednesday night, but there's only one flight. And it's supposed to snow.
Yes. Oh, it is up there. Oh, they got to leave you that house.
We'll see how it goes though. I'm expecting some hit.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing at the invocation, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wilson?
Would you bow with me in prayer? Gracious heavenly Father, during the special season, we're reminded so often of the many, many blessings given to us through grace, not through anything we could have done. We are also reminded of how many folks are suffering with health issues, family issues, homeless issues, and so many more problems. Many of these problems can be solved when we determine to love our neighbor. We ask tonight that you lay on our hearts and desire to make each of us a blessing to someone in the name of the baby born as a sacrifice for us. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call our December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting to order. It's our last council meeting of this year. Welcome everyone who is here in attendance with us tonight and those watching online. Thanks to all the council members for wearing their festive attire. So even those grinch of us in the crowd. But so we will begin tonight with the consideration to prove tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I need to add item four C. It will be a presentation by Horwath HTL about property up at the Bluffs.
Okay. Okay, any additional?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Under council, introduce items. I need to put an item regarding my resignation from the city council and some next steps coming from that.
Okay.
Thank you. The suspense.
Okay. So we have one item added to guests and visitors' presentation and one council item. Any other additions?
Motion to pass as amended.
A motion and a?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We do have three presentations tonight under guests and visitors. We'll begin with employee recognition. Chief Turner with us tonight, so.
Welcome, Chief. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. We have Travis King and Alex Bacon with us. These are two of our newest employees that we've recently hired. They were successful in going through our hiring process, obviously, which you know is extensive, and they were very successful in that. Both of them came here uncertified and they went through the police academy, did very well, and came out as certified police officers. Mr. Bacon has actually finished with his FTO, his field training through the department, so he is actually in his car taking calls on his own, right? Oh, sorry, King. I get them mixed up. King and Bacon. And then, uh, um, King or Alec Bacon is also in the FTO program and he's doing very well and he's getting toward the end of his FTO program. So we're looking forward to having both of these young men on the street and just want to introduce some of you guys and tell them congratulations and welcome to the agency.
Great. Congratulations to you both and look forward to seeing you around town, so. Next, we have Presentation Performance-Based Infrastructure and Sustainability Project, the midterm report by Ms. Jen Miller of Sch- Schneider Electric.
Hi, everybody. It's good to see you guys again. All right, let's see if I can. Oh, perfect. So it's it's great to be here tonight. I actually brought with me my colleague Kevin May, who has been leading the development and kind of engineering side of this project so far. And, you know, we've been hard at work over the last few months and we've just reached the just about sixty percent milestone, so we wanted to come to you guys and give you all an update on where the project is kind of shaping up to be, give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions you might have and really make sure that we're all on the same page as we're kind of moving forward into the final stages of development. So pretty much, um, right now, we are, um, oh, sorry. This PowerPoint has a lot more detail than we're actually gonna go into. I don't know if any of you have looked over it prior to the meeting, but it has a lot of information. We're gonna hit it at the highest levels and at the end of the presentation, if y'all have any questions, Kevin and I will be happy to address anything specifically. So, um, the first thing we wanted to do is because it has been a few months since we talked about this project, wanted to just quickly touch on kind of the key priorities that we're looking to address with the project. The first is really all about future-proofing city operations. We know that as a council, y'all have really committed to historic preservation. You've chosen to set up your city operations in these beautiful historic buildings with city hall and public safety. But the reality of that is that historic buildings come with challenges. And so the idea of this project is to really set these buildings up for success and set your operations team up for success for years to come. The second area is of all about advancing sustainability. This is obviously a core city tenant. And one of the key goals with that is achieving ARC Green Communities certification status. Kelly and Bethany and y'all's team have really done a lot of work there, but we've identified areas we can support and we feel really good about kind of where we can get you guys moving forward. And then the last area, oh, is maximizing financial investment. Being good stewards of public funds is obviously should be a priority of every city council and we know that's important here. So looking at opportunities to save the city money through the technologies we're putting in, but also engaging with our grant management team to identify any additional funds that we can help bring to the table. So these three key areas are gonna be kind of the three key sections of this presentation as we move forward. So the first area is scope and I know I already said that we're not gonna go into detail. These slides have some detail on them, so I, you know, gonna hit the highest level and kind of the bottom line, but like I said, we'll be happy to dig into anything technical and specific at the end. But the, really, when you're looking at this project, the two biggest undertakings are gonna be the city hall and public safety renovations. They are, like I said, historic buildings that were not constructed to serve the purposes that they are serving today. And with that, that has led to some challenges in occupant comfort and all the things that come along with that. But at city hall specifically, it's a priority because you're running on borrowed time. These, this equipment is already breaking and we really need to make sure that y'all are able to last in as seasons continue to get warmer and things get more difficult. So on top of that, y'all's roof is also at the end of its life cycle. And so because we, there are rooftop mechanical units, it really makes the most sense to do those replacements and projects at the same time. And so we're, we've put together a solution, our mechanical team, along with Kevin, to go in with a somewhat similar system that's gonna just be a lot more efficient and also just way more comfortable for the occupants in here, going to a variable air volume system from just the constant volume system that has to run one hundred percent all the time. At s- at public safety, this is also a priority because this is actually where your maintenance staff with Brandon Poole, they are spending the majority of their time. It is not only old equipment, but the infrastructure in that, in the pipes throughout the building are constantly leaking, creating a mess and a headache for people within that building. So the idea is to come in with one of the most efficient systems out there, a variable refrigerant, refrigerant flow, which I think the most important takeaway for you guys with that system is that this is gonna really improve comfort for your officers and your admin staff throughout that building. With public safety, you usually have in one room, people with bulletproof vests and the next room, you have admin staff in civilian clothes. And it's really hard to keep everybody comfortable. So this is gonna allow everyone to have their own individualized control throughout. And then finally, the last category is kind of the energy and efficiency-based solutions. This ranges from the automation that'll tie into these new mechanical systems, taking that throughout the city, looking at LED lighting, which we're still vetting that across buildings and street lighting, and then giving the, you know, operations team additional tools. On top of that, we're looking at rooftop solar here at city hall. You guys have already done the beautiful part, new parking deck with covered parking on the top with solar. We're gonna expand that footprint with seventy, we're proposing to expand that footprint with seventy KW of solar up on the roof. It makes a lot of sense right now because y'all are, if y'all are replacing that roof and there are all these incentives and tax credits that can apply to these projects, I think it's a really good time to look at this and really minimize your footprint here. So that covers kind of the scope, but specific to sustainability, that's the second key goal. We talked about this ARC certification and Kelly and Bethany have already done so much to get you guys to a position to apply for this certification in the coming year, which should be in the spring of twenty-three. There are aspects, almost literally every aspect of our project helps contribute points to that as well. So we've been trying to look at where we can kind of maximize our efforts there. So the goal is to target the silver level, which is the second level of certification in twenty twenty-three and continue to increase from there. We'll have more specifics on that as we move forward, but that's kind of where we're at and where we're hoping to be for y'all in the next year. With that, there are opportunities that don't necessarily fit into just the bucket of building and standard operations, but opportunities to get creative in ways that really impact the community. And there, one of those is demonstration solar, which if you look on this picture, this is one application of that. It is a covered picnic table bench that can go in any park. We have an idea of it going in Heritage Park, where y'all are looking to put a new playground. This offers parents a place to plug in their phones and sit under shade while they watch their kids play. And it can also, as you saw there, be branded to be City of Canton, provide, you know, a learning opportunity and actual function. The second application of that was kind of born out of discussions around how important art is to the community here in Canton and combining the idea of sculptural applications of that demonstration solar. So we have done this with, you know, some of our more innovative clients in the past and it's been really popular. And the idea was to potentially have that go in Etowah River Park as a place y'all have a lot of events. With that, that's another place someone can go and plug up their phone. You can even add a kiosk that shows people how much the the tree is generating and just provide it as an educational opportunity. And, um, and the last piece of sustainability is really around promotion. This is actually a big portion of the ARC certification. About of the two hundred and eighty, eighty points we've targeted y'all to achieve in the next two years, seventy-five of those points are, require some level of outreach and education to get credit. So we do this in every project that we work on, trying to engage with the community. Y'all's will be very targeted to helping support these ARC goals. And that can be a variety of ways. We're working with Lauren on your marketing team right now to really kind of craft that and should have some specific ideas there, but they're just examples of things we've done in the past with clients. So then the final area is financial impact. And like I said, um, the first piece of that is creating, you know, savings within your operations and utility spend. So these technologies that we're putting in do lower the amount of energy that you're using and lower your utility bill. So y'all are spending around two hundred and, um, eight, eighteen thousand dollars a year on utilities. That doesn't include your wastewater operations. That's looking at your buildings and that side of your operations. And basically, we're projecting that after this project, there'll be a total reduction of twenty-seven percent, should be about sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. And we then guarantee that over twenty years and that amounts to about one point eight million dollars in savings over the course of the partnership. So kind of putting it all together, this, um, this scope matrix kind of shows all the areas that we would be looking to touch with the project. In total, project is looking like it's around ten million where we stand right now. This is our midterm point where we are still doing more vetting. We have more design work to do on mechanical. We have just more, more vetting to do, but that is where it's looking to be. And if you look at the chart on the bottom right, you'll see how the cost breaks out and the majority, those blue bars represent the cost and the green is the savings. The majority of those costs are attributed with the renovations here at city hall and public safety. So that kind of gives you a snapshot of where the project stands. And, um, the last piece was, like we said, we wanna maximize, stretch your dollars as far as we can. We have a grant management team in-house that has already met with Nathan and talked through some of the things that we can do with this project. We're continuing to vet those, but really you need to understand what the actual scope of the project is gonna be before you can go and pursue grants. At this midterm point, it's kind of the point we say, okay, go, and we start to really narrow down on the opportunities that we see. So all of this, you know, from the Inflation Reduction Act to the IIJA, these are all very unique opportunities that we wanna help you guys capitalize if, if applicable. So moving forward, this is the midterm checkpoint. We, from here on, you know, we'd love your input and wanna understand that we're lining up to your priorities and then hoping to finalize design throughout the next few months into March, presenting kind of that ninety percent, here's where we're at, and then coming back to you guys in April and hopefully seeking council approval. So that is a lot of information, I know, but it's months of work kind of boiled down into fifteen minutes. We wanted to give you guys the information to understand and we welcome any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jen, for that exciting overview and update. So any questions, comments? Ms. McGree?
Thank you. I don't know how, about your evaluation of the public safety building, but I'm curious, did you notice any mold?
Didn't really see a lot of mold. I mean, obviously, there's some, there's some water damage in certain areas, but a lot of it is previous damage, it looks like, from just the plaster on the walls coming out in certain corners. Looks like there's probably some drainage issues. But no, ma'am, I did not notice any kind of significant mold issues.
The solar power that's on the top of the parking garage right now, we're hoping that it will power this building. Will the additional solar panels power public safety?
No, ma'am. So the canopy that's already out there will offset some of your current building load. It won't power the entire building.
Okay.
And there's additional load out there still that we can offset even more. We won't take it to net zero, as in the solar won't be able to take care of all the building, but it'll do a good bit of it.
Okay, great. And Jen, I, I don't expect an answer from this, but just in case, when you were looking at the picnic tables with the solar tops, did you happen to notice any picnic tables that had an extension that would accommodate a wheelchair? I'm sure we can find this.
They actually do. They, and that particular company does make a model that allows for a wheelchair access.
Thank you. Definitely look into that. That's all. Thanks.
Mr. Waterman?
The solar, um, right for the roof, is that one hundred percent dedicated to the building? Meaning that it won't, no portion will go back into a grid or?
Yeah, so it's, uh, Georgia Power has certain requirements on sizing and their net metering rates are not terrible. So, yeah, we wanna try to size it just for the actual building load and peak use. That's correct.
Thank you.
And there is, in the appendix, there is a chart that outlines kind of the, the load and the sizing that you can see where that that lines up.
Further questions, comments? Great. Well, thank you for the information, the detailed report. We'll look forward to delving into that further. I'm sure we'll look at that all over our holiday break and, but come back and with other questions and comments, but we appreciate all the information, so thank you very much. Next, we had a presentation that was added by Horwath HTL on some property, exciting, um, report on some property at the Bluffs. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm Paul Breslin with Horwath HTL and very excited to be here. So thank you, Mayor and City Council, City Manager and all those, City Clerk. I may have missed, so apologies, but, um, what we were asked to do as a hotel consultant was to take a look at an opportunity of a site on, on the lake and to see if there was, if it was viable or feasible to build a hotel or resort on this site. So I put this little, and by the way, there's two reports for you. One is this presentation and then there's a much more detailed report that you have. I won't go through all the details on the, on that report, but I, I will be available if there's ever any questions or Billy will be happy to have me come back and, and go through any of the details with you. And I, we, we added a little bit of our, I asked for forgive this, sometimes we use jargon, so this is a little chart to help through some of our things like RevPAR and GoPAR and all those kind of things. But I'll, I'll sum it up for you so that, um, what you see, and we, we tend to compress a lot here, so that, I apologize, it's a lot of small numbers. I'll just tell you that when we go to do a hotel study, one of the first things we'll look at is the demand. Is there really a need for a hotel? Even though you have a beautiful location and you can bu- build a magnificent resort, will there be enough demand in the market? And we believe in the end, this resort, when stabilized, will, will generate about sixty-five percent occupancy in a hotel. That's above average for a hotel. We believe it will be in the average daily rate range of over three hundred and, almost three hundred and fifty dollars. So this is a very nice, um, resort with a RevPAR, which is revenue per available room. And the reason why that's an important metric, this is how you measure any hotel compared to any other hotel. So you can say, what's your RevPAR at the Marriott Marquis or a hundred and twenty-five room resort out on Canton Lake? And your RevPAR here would be about two hundred and fifty dollars. So from a very holistic, general perspective, those are very favorable numbers. But of course, we dug much deeper into that. And you'll see on the, on here, what, what this is, this summarizes some of our, what we would consider the, the definition of what we proposed, based on the size, the demographics, the psychographics, the geographical location, what, what works well in Georgia and how that would fit. So we proposed for you around a hundred and twenty-five room resort. That resort would also have full amenity facilities of a, of a, uh, a resort that you would expect on the water with boats and docks. And of course, this particular lake we know is very unique because it doesn't allow for gas, um, boats. And we saw that as a headwind, meaning a challenge, but in spite of that, on the strengths and weaknesses, the, the strengths were far more advantageous than some of the weaknesses. You would, you, we would have to, this is out of sight and out of visibility, so accessibility is good, but visibility is not. So it would have to be a destination resort. It'd have to be a place where people would come to know and want to go. Or Cali, you may think of Callaway Gardens or, or Barnsley Resort. They're not exactly visible, but every, you know, it's pretty well widely known as, as an example. One of the things that we talked about with your team was incorporating all the data and analytics from this, from the Georgia Tourism. And a couple of things, I won't go through every number here, but one thing that just really is amazing on here is that if you look at the, the, on the bottom row, the second to last one, Georgia is the fifth most popular destination as a state of all of the United States, which is absolutely amazing. It, it also generates, a- as tourism goes, sixty-four billion dollars of economic impact. I share this with you because this is based on only a hundred and fifty-nine million visitors. So how can there be that much economic impact? And this becomes relevant for you later as a city because you're not a hotel developer. You wanna know what's the real reason why we would want a resort. And this ratio of economic impact of what, what a, a destination resort or tourism does for your community is absolutely outstanding. And so I just bring those to you and this is in your report and there's much more detail for this. If we do go forward and you want to go pursue this further, um, one of the early action steps is an economic impact for this specific resort to help you understand how this will help you alleviate property taxes, how it will add value to your community, how it adds jobs and all of those things. But just knowing that, that on a statewide, that you're the fifth best destination as a state is really impressive and that the economic impact, that these are actual numbers from night, from two years ago and, and we have improved significantly since then. So this is all great data for you to rely on and that, that is done through, um, the tourism. So I, I don't expect you to see and understand all these charts, but what I thought you'd wanna know is how did we get to this point of understanding the man? So we, we picked the location as the most obvious and we, we relied heavily on, on your team for helping us through the, we navigated the, the lake together and went out on the water and it was really, you know, we, we had quite a bit of, of visits and great, but what we learned was who would be your customers? Who would be the users of your resort? We call those demand generators. We've outlined those. We've studied those. We went and made sure there was enough desired utilization of a resort like this. utilization of a resort like this. We also looked at, from the business side, the social side, the, what we call SMURF, you may want to learn that term, it's Social, Military, Educational, Religious and Fraternal. That's kind of a segment for us. And we looked at all of the ways and reasons why someone might want to use this resort. We also looked at actual current facilities that were similar to yours. How well do they perform? And why are they successful? Why are they not successful? And from that, we determined that, you know, based on like comparisons, we feel that there is a strong possibility or high probability of success. And then we did that on a dual check. We also checked for like resorts in Georgia and in neighboring states to see if that mattered. Ultimately, we evaluated and studied your lodging market. We studied the competitive market, and we deciphered from that, from our analytics. And we do this, my business, we've been in business for 16 years. We're global, we're one of 50 offices in the world in 39 countries, and we do this around the globe. We have a very, in Georgia, we have a team of eight, and we, this is our specialty. We go out and really help to try to see if hotels will be feasible or not. And we're completely unbiased. I think it's important you know. We were hired, and from the very beginning, Billy and Angie and Nathan and the entire team said to us, look, if it's not feasible, we're not trying to force this. You tell us if it's a go or no-go, it's good either way. We want to know if it's favorable or unfavorable. So we never felt any pressure to say, oh, this is a great idea. It was just really unbiased opinion. And then we looked very deeply into the characteristics of your site. We visited it, we went and looked at it, we studied it, the topography, the accessibility, we looked at all of the reasons, really almost like a process of elimination. Is there any reason why it wouldn't work? Or is there, if it would, what would be some of the most difficult challenges? For example, and you'll see in the report, anything that's a weakness, we identify it, like limited visibility or terrain, but you just have to know, going out there intuitively, it's absolutely spectacular view. It's just incredible. We also went and looked at comparable type sizes, bed configurations, what we call program. We tried to identify the most economical, sustainable, I don't know if our system is sustainable here, but to try to figure out, how do you build the most economical and most efficient, but yet a hotel that would serve multiple market segments? For example, on the leisure, when you're high in demand in leisure, when it's in-season in the summer, you probably won't have a lot of people using the meeting space, but maybe for social events. But on the shoulder seasons, when things aren't, the climate's a little bit more like today, you'll be doing a lot of meetings and events, and you'll have a lot of people wanting, so we put meeting space in here, banquet space for weddings and parties. We added a pretty tight program, meaning we utilize as much space as we can and assume a certain amount of utilization of each area. We picked the typical type of size of a room of this type of resort. We created the different models for bedding and created, just so you would have an idea in the report of what you can envision. We also created, one of the featured opportunities we think here is for a very special restaurant. Because of your close proximity to the downtown and to the growing population, we think a really nice waterfront, if you've ever been to Disney Springs and been to the Boathouse, we're kind of inspired by that Boathouse model of that restaurant, on as close as we can get to the lake. Hopefully, we're allowed to have pylons to allow a restaurant really close to the lake, and it would just be absolutely amazing to have a restaurant like that right on the water. It would just be bar none in this market and in all of Georgia. So we were heavily inspired by that. We also had, we laid out this vision of a place where there would be really a spread-out resort, very family-oriented, not luxury, but not economy, not even mid-scale, more of what we would consider upscale to upper up scales, so you're below luxury, kind of in the mid-level, and it would be priced very competitively, but very nice. And cost-wise, we also looked at what would the cost of the project versus its projected revenue? We developed a financial model, and there's going to be a quiz on this in a minute here, so.
Good luck.
But we go to the, this is an actual hotel profit-loss statement that we model, and we go into every category and anticipate your expenses for a 10-year projection. And then we assume, what is your return on your investment or your cash after taxes and understanding what your probability of success? And then Billy and the team asked us, so what if we're off by $2 or $4 in the rate? What if our cost's a little high? So we added a sensitivity analysis for you so that you could do some what-if planning, that if we were 10% worse than we thought, where would it be? If we're 10% better, where would we be? And so this is a little chart to help you with your sensitivity analysis. And before I get to questions, I just want to point out that the good news is, while the hotel would be very nice, we believe it would be feasible. We believe it would be a highly-desired project for a developer. And I know in the budget costs, you might see that a cost of this hotel is over $40 million. That's not the city's cost, that's the developer's cost. You're, and we're often asked, I present many times to many city council, and they like, how do we get a great resort? Well, the way to do it is to collaborate, and you have tools in your toolbox, ways that you can incentivize economic development, whether it's tax abatement or maybe providing land. These options will become critical to get the right kind of quality resort. You say, can we do it without any incentives? Well, we showed you in the model what we think would be a reasonable incentive. Now, how you do it is, you know, we can show you how others do it, but we think that a good incentive will allow for a developer to build the right quality resort. Because that little extra incentive, let's call it 15 to 25%, depending on what you're willing to do for them, that will allow them to do something that will be really special and iconic for you. You know, that's how you get a Barnsley Gardens or someone like that to do a project like the, you probably know from your counterparts that, like Lawrenceville just underwrote a big incentive for their downtown hotel, and some, and they're all over Georgia, in Douglasville, Georgia, they underwrote a big resort, $40 million incentive package over many years, but I don't think you need that here. I think you have an unbelievable location. I think that a very reasonable incentive, and I think it has, and this is why that economic impact is so important. It's viable, it's feasible, it will add a tremendous economic impact for you, and the things that are at your disposal are not at the disposal of the resort developer that will allow he or she to do the quality resort that you want. I'm sorry if that was a little fast for you, but I figured you got a lot on your agenda tonight. So it was a high-level summary, but I'm absolutely here if there's any questions or if you want me to go over anything that I may have gone over quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Breslin. It's certainly an exciting presentation, opportunities. I mean, this council decided to purchase that property at The Bluffs and redirect the development opportunities last year for this very reason. And I think you mentioned doing the, you know, next step, do an economic impact study, possibly, you know, economic impact it could have for the city. I mean, I think that would certainly help us determine what the incentives could be that we could offer, seeing what the impact could be to the city and to the citizens. So it's very exciting to hear that it's highly feasible and attractive. So I would assume that we would use this information to, if council decided that was what they wanted to, the direction they wanted to take, to then market it to potential developers.
Yeah, and Billy asked me to touch on that if you had time. One of the things that I would highly recommend you do is the impact study, and almost concurrently is, is reach out to some of the, what I call the brands, the franchise organizations. Because today, to do a hotel without a franchise is very, very hard. Hard to get finance and so forth. And create a model, you know, probably cost you out of pocket, I'm going to just say a round number of $100,000, maybe 50, but somewhere in that neighborhood of seed money to take this analytical approach and put some visual to it. Have a good land planner, hotel, resort planner, not do the drawings, but just the concepts. Get you the concepts. Get the brands to say, we want this, and have them compete with proposals. And then, and then have your impact study so you know what's in your toolbox to give. And I wouldn't offer, and if you're off, if they say you could do up to 20%, I'd go out with 10 or less, because you may find a motivated, and then, but put that package together, because what we find is, when, A, you get to steer it the way you want to, so that it's nice enough and the quality you want, not too low, not too high, but just what you want. And then that becomes the package you put out to the RFP, to the developers. And the difference in that little bit of change in the experience I have, because I've seen so many sites where they just put out the beautiful picture of the lake, and then you're, you get the wrong people wanting to come in and you don't, you can steer it. I know it's a little, it's like playing hotel developer a little bit, but those little steps, and there's variations of that. You might be able to do, you know, a little less on the design, but those three things would really help you to create something that would be, and it's so spectacular. I'd hate to see something go there that sets the bar low for the beginning, because I think whatever goes in there as the resort will be the bar that sets for everything for the future, which is, you're very lucky. It was a very smart move by the.
Couldn't agree more. Lake Canton is a wonderful asset for the city, and I think it represents huge potential for the future, for everyone.
I'm so happy for you. Just excited.
Initial questions, comments at this point? Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. It's been, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You, too. Happy Holidays.
We have a couple informational items this evening. These are for information-only reports. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sorry. Got so many notes on here, so. Thank you all. So, so next, we will have consideration-approved minutes, so you have in your pack at the draft minutes for our December 1st meeting. Are there any changes, additions, revisions or motions?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All members voted for the motion. Now, we have, move on to informational items, a couple informational items on upcoming cases. Again, for information-only, reports from staff, beginning with item A, information-only presentation of staff report, cases ANNX-2210-006, RZON-2211-002, and CUP-2211-007. Annexation, rezoning and conditional use permit request for 14.36 acres located at 620 Promise Point Parkway for the construction of a 114-unit townhome development. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have received a request from the attorney for the applicant on this particular project. I emailed it to you earlier today. They are requesting that this item be deferred until the second meeting in January. It will come back again as an informational item, and if everything works out, will be placed on the February public hearing calendar.
Okay. Do we?
It was just informational.
Okay. Awesome. So the next one, we have item B, information-only presentation of staff report, cases ANNX-2211-004, RZON-2211-006, CUP-2211-005, and MP-2211-008. Annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit and master plan request for 20.1 acres located at 187 and 295 Gale Avenue, 191, 211 and 214 Putnam Drive for the construction of a residential development. Mr. Green?
Thank you. Let me go back to the previous application since there was no discussion on it, and I assume that you're okay with a deferral until January.
I don't even think they have a say in it. You're the one starting it. If you don't want to start it. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
All right. The, of the item that you just mentioned, the annexation, rezoning, CUP and master plan request for the Gale Avenue area, the applicant is looking to construct 33 single-family detached homes, 25 townhomes, 32 quadplex unit and 210 apartment units. This item will come before you in January as a public hearing, and at that time, the staff report will be a little further along when I get comments from the other departments. It will be included in that particular staff report.
Great. Thank you for the report, Mr. Green. Glad you're feeling better. Do we have any announcements this evening?
Mayor, I'd just like to point out, and I know everyone here is aware, but maybe the public might not be aware, that both these are in the pipeline before we decided to make a pause on residential development.
Correct. Yes, always good to point that out. Any other announcements this evening? No one sign up for our public input tonight? So we'll move into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on case ZCA-2210-004, request to amend the current zoning conditions for 39.98 acres of the Park Village development. Mr. Green?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the action meeting for this particular zoning condition amendment request. As you stated, this is a request to add additional uses, basically light industrial, corporate office uses to be allowed in this part of what is commonly known as a Park Village project. Within the staff report, there were some recommended conditions, and they were largely based on the previous approval for the Becker development just immediately north of this property. I have not received any further communications from any residents that either are opposed or against this particular project, so tonight, it is at your pleasure for approval or denial.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And would you or Ms. Smith, would you mind reviewing the conditions for consideration that staff is recommending for approval for this project?
Or I can read them off if you like.
That'd be lovely.
All right. Condition number one for consideration, there shall be a 50-foot buffer along the subject property boundary lines as noted on the applicant's zoning plan titled Park Village Track 3. The first 25 feet of this buffer shall be planted with material that will provide an opaque screen to the adjacent property. Virginia pines and eastern red cedars shall not be used in said screen planting. All perimeter site security lighting shall face inward toward the subject property. Said lighting shall be installed so as not to be a nuisance to adjacent properties. Wall pack lighting shall be prohibited on any rear building that faces neighboring properties, with the exception of property line that is common with the Becker property. Number three, a traffic study shall be submitted with the land disturbance permit. This traffic study shall be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Delivery hours shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. There shall be no Sunday deliveries. Number five, the native plant rescue society shall be allowed to access the property prior to any land disturbance in order to search for and remove any endangered plant species. Number six, should this parcel be subdivided into separate tracks, all interior setbacks shall be those as required in the light industrial zoning district. Required buffers shall be 10 feet in width along all property lines.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And just to confirm, these are the... And just to confirm, these are the exact same conditions that were comping to approval for the, for the Becker project in the same vicinity?
I would not say that they are, that they are the exact same. The properties had some differences, but they are very similar.
Excellent, okay. Thank you. Questions, comments for Mr. Green? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Green, I couldn't hear very well. Did you say there would be or would not be any evening deliveries?
The delivery hours, as I recommended, are seven AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, and no Sunday deliveries.
Ten PM. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Schmidt?
Did we need to include a condition about the covenants, or is that an automatic?
Well, the covenants are typically filed with the county, and they are adhered to by whatever developers would be in there.
Yeah, the, the covenants that COED does on these types of developments.
It, it would be, it would be part of their sales package if they sold the property, leased the property to someone else. In addition, I think the proposal was also to have some cross-transportation with the Becker site. So there would be some shared covenants there as well, as well as shared covenants with the Bluffs because it'll have access to Bluff's court.
But we don't need to put that in the list of conditions?
I don't think so because I think they'll have to do it anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Wilson?
If there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve this development with the six conditions as were read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I said development, and I meant to say current zoning conditions.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving forward with item B, discussion and possible action on cases RZON two-two-zero-in dash zero-zero-six and CUP two-two-zero-nine dash zero-zero-seven. Request to rezone and obtain conditional use approval for seven-ten Marietta Road, twelve-fifty, and seventy Marietta Circle. Mr. Green.
Now, this application or applications consist of a rezoning and a conditional use permit. The applicant is looking to change the existing zoning or zonings from ORT and RA-six to RA-eight for the purpose of developing five quadplex buildings, convert one of three single-family homes into a duplex, and renovate the other existing two homes, which would be a total of twenty-four new living units out there. During the last meeting, there was some discussion as to the property conditions, items that may need to be addressed. Mr. Latimer has answered those questions. I have forwarded his responses to you. Our department recommends approval of this development with certain conditions. Also, he has met with Georgia Power. He has arranged for the installment or placement of some new streetlights along that particular section of Marietta Road. I believe Ms. Schmidt also forwarded you a, a commentary from an adjacent property owner. And Mr. Latimer has agreed to all, all the conditions that were placed as suggestions by the staff. And if you'd like, I'll read those for you as well.
Please do.
All right. Uh, conditions for, for consideration, and I believe you like to include these conditions on both the rezoning application and the CUP. All right. Number one, the development shall only be accessed from Marietta Road. Basically saying no access to the properties other than the single-family home that currently exists. I think it's twelve Marietta Circle. Number two, a solid screening fence shall be installed and or repaired along the common property line of six-ten Marietta Road. Number three, the owner developer shall install a sign within the property that provides contact information for the property management service. Number four, the owner developer shall provide a streetlight at the intersection of Marietta Road and Marietta Circle. And as previously stated, he has made arrangements for that to happen. Number five, the owner developer shall make a monetary contribution to go towards community art projects as agreed upon by the city and him herself. And number six, the owner developer shall work with the Cherokee County Board of Education to find a possible alternative location for the existing school bus stop at Marietta Circle.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. On the school bus stop, I mean, that is, I mean, they, they can have those discussions, but that's entirely up to the discretion of the school board, correct?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Schmidt?
Um, yes. Mr. Green, I know the plan calls for a privacy fence that makes Marietta Circle have no outlet. The way it's going to be built, is it possible that if that fence were ever removed, Marietta Circle would still exist? Or is it a permanent closure to Marietta Circle?
Well, Marietta Circle is not a through street as it is, so.
Well.
The way the site plan is right now, there's not a paved travel lane between the proposed development through to Marietta Circle. So someone would be jumping the curb, driving through grass, planted shrubbery, and all of that to get to Marietta Circle.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Mr. Tolan?
Yes, I have a few comments I'd like to make if I may. Latimer Properties, Latimer Apartments LLC has been a, in the past, a great partner of the city. They own, I believe at last count, roughly ninety-four, ninety-five apartments in the city. Are they perfect? No, they're not. But they've come up with a plan to mitigate some of the concerns that folks have raised. They're known for having quality products. They, you know, typically will have granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, luxury vinyl flooring. I don't know, Mr. Green, you could comment on any feedback you've gotten relative to what the plan is on this project. Let me just get through my list here. Yet they seem to address the concerns of, of the citizens in the, in the area. I mean, right down the line. The area is highly walkable, and that's one of the facets that a couple of people that commented in favor of the development made relative to being extremely positive. They haven't, they have in fact hired a management company. There's one individual and four people, I believe, work for that person. Mr. Latimer, I thought was crystal clear about what their long-term position would be. Number one, they will manage the build-out of this project and the previously approved projects. But ongoing responsibilities will include the entire management of all ninety-four of those properties. That gives me a, a fair amount of comfort that, you know, those things in the past may have slipped through the cracks. These folks will be dedicated one-hundred percent to the management and upkeep of those properties. And I believe we have a very good code compliance office that will see to it that those are, those are taken care of. The other thing that I wanted to address is this does in fact match the affordable housing, affordable housing AMI of thirty percent. I think one of the, one of the residents of Canton sent us an email stating that the average income of individuals is thirty thousand dollars. The average household income, which is where AMI is measured in the Sandy Springs, Alpharetta, Canton District, if you will, is just over sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Thirty percent of that is roughly seventeen hundred dollars per month. And Mr. Latimer's properties are, are slated to rent between twelve and fifteen hundred dollars. That's for a three and, I'm sorry, a two and three bedroom.
I believe it's between fifteen and eighteen hundred.
Yep. So I understand from Mr., talking to Mr. Patton today, that the eighteen hundred dollars is in, is, is related to four bedrooms. I don't know that he, and maybe you can correct me, Mr. Green, has any plans to build four bedrooms as part of this project?
Uh, do not know on the, on the layout of the buildings.
My understanding is, is the four bedrooms that he does own, those are acquired properties. So that, that's my understanding. So I, if there are no other comments, I would like to make a motion.
Could we just make sure we're following up on, I was told that the Marietta Circle, the metal plate in Marietta Circle still hasn't been, that asphalt hasn't been repaired.
I can certainly check in with that.
As long as we're on the radar for that.
Yes, ma'am. Weather may have been a factor. We've had a little rain the last couple of days.
I understand. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, I would like to make a, a motion that we approve the rezoning requests and the conditional use permit for seven-ten Marietta Road as well as twelve-fifty and seventy Marietta Circle. With the conditions? With the conditions that Mr. Green has laid out. Thank you.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Ms. Schmidt?
I have one more question. Sorry, I don't have the conditions pulled up in front of me anymore. Was one of the conditions about no construction vehicles will be on Marietta Circle? They'll use that driveway for the house that will still have access? And everything else will be through off Marietta Road?
That was not one of the conditions. Mr. Latimer has stated in the meeting that that would be the case. If you want to add that condition, that would be acceptable.
We can make that a condition of pulling the permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Item C, discussion and possible action to amend utility services contract to include the removal of water tanks on East Main Street and Brown Industrial Boulevard. Mr. Otavion?
Thank you. Like I said last time, we've got several tanks located throughout the city that are in need of removal. The one on Brown Industrial will be the site for a new booster pump station on another project. And the ones on East Main just haven't been used probably for the forty years. Utility Services has said they will get this demolition done within the first six weeks of 2023.
Discuss that. This is the last meeting and the amount it took to, to remove those. So any questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
Did you say how long it would take to take down four water tanks?
I'm not sure how long. I don't think it's going to take very long.
And what about the disposal?
They're, they're taking care of everything.
Is there anything that can be recycled during, from that demolition?
If there is, that, that part of the deal is they'll, they'll take that. I mean, it's old steel tanks and, you know, it may take something, but.
Any further questions, comments, or motions? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make the motion that we include the removal of water tanks on East Main Street and Brown Industrial Boulevard in the utility services contract.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion and possible action to award task order number twenty-seven to Atkins for construction management services to relocate a water line on State Route one-forty at Avery Road. Mr. Otavion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't get this on the last meeting's agenda. I didn't have my numbers in time. But yeah, the, we've awarded a contract to CAM Contractors to do this water line relocation as part of GDOT road widening project or intersection improvement project. And this is just the construction management services. It's in the order of, if I remember right, twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Questions or comments? Any motions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Is any of this work in the city limits?
I'm not sure.
None of this, none of this particular project is in the city limits.
But it's in our water service.
Yeah, it's in our water service, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Wilson?
Hey, I'll try to get this one right. Awarded a task order number twenty-seven to Atkins for construction management services to relocate a water line, State Route one-forty at Avery Road.
Perfect. I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item E, discussion of redistricting council wards. Mr. Peppers?
Just quickly, I had, uh, this was in the last agenda with a copy of the map. I also emailed the map out to you. If any of you have any particular things that you want to look at, movement of any lines or, or change of any particular neighborhoods associated with the map, if you'll send that information to me, I'll sit down with our GIS team and we can rerun the numbers, the population numbers based on census. What my goal would be is to come back to you at the first meeting in January with the map that was initially proposed by staff and any additional optional maps that may come from conversations with individual council members so that those can all be looked at at the same time. And then that we would move forward in the second meeting in January with the approval of a formal map.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to, we have to adopt it twice.
Right.
So we'd have to do the second meeting in January, the first meeting in February. Is that your plan?
Yes.
You may have said this, and I missed it, but this is a home rule. We don't have to go to the legislature for this, right?
That is correct. And one thing that's important for citizens to understand is the way Canton handles its elections versus other communities. You may have a community that has a council member that represents an independent ward. You may have six wards, for instance. In that particular instance, it does really matter where you live because you only have the opportunity to run for office as a, as a council member once every four years. In Canton, with three wards and two members in each ward, every citizen in the city who's eligible to run for office is eligible to run at every election cycle of the city. The ward just determines which area they're allowed to run in.
Sometimes more often. So just clarification, two readings, two adoptions. If we adopted the first meeting in February, that would still give us six months before qualifying in mid to late August, which means anyone in those new wards, the only requirement that they would need to live in that ward six months would be able to qualify. So we'd still have that time.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
I wanted to ask Mr. Peppers. For public record, would you mind explaining who redrew the lines? How it was done? Why it was done this way?
Sure.
And was there impartiality?
So what we did is we sat down with our contractor who handles all of our mapping for the city. They uploaded census block track information once it was available. And basically that allowed us to see what the population was of our existing wards. And then the criteria that I gave to the, to the GIS mapper was please use roadways or rivers or natural boundaries as an opportunity to. With the goal to get those three wards as close as possible in number of citizens using that criteria. And so that was done by a third party, looking at the maps, looking at, you know, highways and roadways and rivers as boundaries and the existing wards. What we didn't want to do is we didn't want a situation where, you know, we draw half of one word, ward completely away. But we were trying to keep them as, as functional as they are in the existing map. What basically happened is Ward Two had to grow, and so it grew to the north, the south, and to the east, and even to the west. It, it basically expanded among the center of the, of the wards. Ward One lost a little bit of territory. Ward Three lost a little bit of territory. And Ward Pick that up to get those numbers. Ward, uh, one lost a little bit of territory. Ward three lost a little bit of territory and Ward picked that up to get those numbers somewhat equal.
And did you mention something about, um, the drawing of the lines to make sure that the elected officials still lived in the ward they were representing at this moment?
That was the other, the other criteria that I gave them is we didn't want a situation where we redid. And, and naturally with, with the six elected officials that we have right now, it wasn't very difficult, but based on where you fit within those wards for us to be able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
So, so basically, I mean, our, our wards, because of the way the city has grown, um, were very, you know, unequal. And, and so the equity that existed there, even though everyone votes for all council members in the city, uh, wound up, you know, Ward two being very, very small compared to the other two. So, uh, so the pool of candidates that could qualify in that ward, you know, were very much limited compared to the other two wards. And so the goal is to, to, to get the three wards as equal in population as possible and also make the lines and the, the wards, the boundaries as clear as possible, I think. So people understand which ward they're in. So if they are interested in running, again, anyone in the city can run, uh, regardless of which ward they, uh, they, they are running in, uh, understand which ward they live in. Now it's, 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 it's confusing. And so the goal is to make it less confusing and more equitable for everyone. So.
And the maps also keep all organized neighborhoods within one ward. We don't have any split neighborhoods.
Yeah. So it's not like we're taking sections of one neighborhood and putting them over here. So, so. And there's, you know, elections are non, nonpartisan in the city of Canton, so there's no, there's no, none of that, uh, mentality going on. So. Okay. So we'll look forward to, to, um, any input council has on, 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 on that map. So.
You know, Mayor, um, I think the ward, the, the boundaries were drawn before we had a lot of the larger subdivisions.
They were.
So in order to end up as well as we have, I think that was good foresight on the people that did it originally.
Yeah.
But, um, this will be much better, much more population sensitive.
Definitely, definitely. Okay, moving into new business, we have one item, discussion of possible action to approve resolution of support for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, DCA Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund, DDRRLF program for Canton Cigar Company LLC. Ms. Busby, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for, um, taking time to have discussion of possible action to approve resol- resolution of support for the Department of Community, Georgia Department of Community Affairs Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund for Canton Cigar Company LLC.
Any questions, comments?
Do you want to say anything about it?
Well, what I can say is yes, this, uh, has gone, you know, before them with the initial project assessment and they're now to the position, um, from the DCA to get an approval. Um, I think the amount is sixty thousand five eight three. Did I get that right?
Just write in that sixty thousand.
Um, and so it's gap financing for, um, that, um, business that, the down, uh.
Neither the city nor the DDA owes the money.
We're just, yeah, we're just making sure as this resolution saying they are the business doing what they're doing and that, you know.
They're located.
We're, we're generally in support.
We just support. Right. Correct.
I do have a question, Mayor, if I may, either to Ms. Busby or, or Mr. Peppers or Mr. Tyre. You know, this, this obviously is a private business. If someone could explain to the public why an initiative like this even comes before council, that, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So, um, the state of Georgia had set up back in the early two thousands, late nineteen nineties, some funds that they had received for low interest loans in downtowns across the state of Georgia. The only criteria, uh, with the state is that to be eligible for those loan funds, you have to be in a downtown development district, which means you have an active downtown development authority that has a boundary within that community. The Department of Community Affairs handles all of the intake of applications. They handle all of the credit underwriting on the particular businesses and it's set up as gap funding. So they're looking at the projects and the investors in the projects to make sure that they're not eligible for bank financing to cover that project that truly is a gap and the gap can be filled through a low interest loan. Um, in, in our case, um, because we have an active downtown development authority, the downtown development authority, uh, uh, submits with the applicant to the state for this particular funding. The state of Georgia cannot give the money directly to a private entity. They can give it through a downtown development authority. So it becomes the fiscal vehicle for the loan. But it is a non-recourse loan to the downtown development authority. It's personally guaranteed by the receiver of the loan. And so in this particular case, um, several years ago, the state of Georgia added an additional step, which is a resolution of support by the city because they didn't want a situation where a downtown development authority was agreeing to do a project, but the city didn't want the project in their community. So it's really a checking balance between all the levels of the local community and the state community.
I think if I just landed here from Mars, I would understand that. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Appreciate that.
How long have you been here?
Little while.
Ms. Schmidt?
Um, I'd like to move to approve the resolution of support for the DCA Downtown Development Revolving Loan Fund for Canton Cigar Company.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Busby.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. Mr. Peppers?
You have at your seats and you were also provided by email earlier this week with. We had a busy month, of course, uh, and so you'll see items on there from all of our different departments. Uh, that should be posted to our city website under the city manager's page tomorrow, uh, for our citizens if they would like to look at that. Uh, that's the first item I wanted to cover. The second item I wanted to cover is, uh, information on an initiative that we're working on with the, uh, police department and also parks and recreation. Uh, we are looking at adding some additional Flock cameras. Those are the license plate reader cameras that are triggered based upon, uh, uh, information about outstanding warrants or information about, uh, crime statistics related to certain vehicles in the state of Georgia. Uh, we are looking to add some of those to our entrance or exit areas in some of the parks around the city. We have seen an increase, uh, over the past year in some entering vehicles in some of the parks. Uh, and that would be another tool for the police department in those particular situations. We're also looking at it from an economic development perspective, uh, to see if we can also capture information. For example, if we have a concert at Edgewood River Park, if we can get a breakdown from Flock as to where the license plates for that particular event come from, you know, X percentage of Cherokee County tags. There's a percentage that's Cobb or, or Fulton or what have you. That's good marketing information from the tourism side as well. So we're looking into that, uh, and we'll let you know the next steps when we get ready to move, uh, forward with that. Uh, the other thing I would mention to you, and I'd be remiss to say this if I, if I didn't take this opportunity, is just how grateful, uh, our staff is for the, for the work of the council, uh, and the work of the partnership with our citizens. Here in the city, we've had a great year, lot of accomplishments. Uh, does it mean we're a perfect family? Absolutely not. We make mistakes. Uh, we, we work through those. We have a great team of professionals that provide service to our citizens, our businesses and our visitors. Uh, we would not be able to do the work that we do without such great professionals working with us in all of our departments uh, and without the support of the mayor and council helping us and providing us with the resources necessary to get the job done. And our citizens, uh, who do such a wonderful job at letting us know when there are issues or when there are concerns. Uh, we try to be as responsive as we can, uh, following our own, uh, our own, uh, procedures. Uh, but I appreciate this year and, and I know that, uh, I know that even greater things will be coming to the city in twenty twenty-three. So since this is the last meeting of the year, I just wanted to get that off my chest. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Ms. Schmidt?
I just wanted to say how nice the intersection outside Teasley Middle School is looking.
The poles are going in.
That's right.
Uh, and I will tell you that, uh, earlier today, um, staff met with, uh, architects with the school district on the, um, some of the exterior elevations for Cherokee High School. It's going to be a beautiful facility, something I think we'll all be proud of. Uh, one of the things that I'm super proud about that particular project, uh, is that it's not a prototype. This is a uniquely designed building for our community and it is going to be gorgeous. Uh, so having good traffic signals to get those students and parents, uh, and buses into those facilities will be very helpful.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have one council introduced items by Mr. Carlin to announce and discuss his resignation. So, Mr. Carlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna try to get through this without getting too emotional, but it's been a, been a busy, busy twenty-four hours. A lot of y'all know that I spent, before coming to council, I spent five years of part-time magistrate for the county. Where I operated my law practice and I had, uh, spent some time over at the jail each week signing warrants and being woken up in the middle of the night for search warrants and things like that. And after about five years of that, I'd done about all the different things I could do and saw that we had this great team assembling in twenty twenty and an opportunity came up to come serve the city that I grew up in. And it was an, an easy decision to leave the court, uh, and come over and spend some time here with the city. When I got here, we had some thoughts about what we might be able to get done in the next fifteen years. And then we got almost all of it done in a couple. Well, as of yesterday, I found out that, well, found out that county created a new full-time magistrate position, uh, with the court. And I found out yesterday that I was appointed to that officially. So I will start that term in January, which requires me to step down from this position, that pesky separation of powers that we all learned about in high school, grade school. When do you learn about separation of powers?
Some of us never do.
I'll have to check with Facebook about that. But I, I want to take a minute to, to tell you that it was, it was not an, it was not as easy of a decision to, to make the decision to go into the court, uh, full-time. It is a good, good thing. It's a good thing for my family. It's a good thing professionally. But there's a lot of work we've been doing here and it did, there was some pause to make sure that, to really test that feeling, make sure this is the right decision. As I knew I was going to have to talk about this tonight, I was thinking about, there were all these different times in Canton's history where things happened. You know, our First Nation folks decided this bend in the river was a pretty good spot for a settlement. Then later on, some people decided there's a pretty good spot for a railroad. And, uh, that was good. And then, uh, don't worry, Joe, you weren't around for those things. The, one of the most important things that happened was when some very insightful people decided to bring five seventy-five up through here, which completely changed what Canton could be, um, and gave it the, the running start into this next generation. I would put these last couple of years up against any of those steps forward because it's clearly a change. I grew up here. Sitting up here, I think I'm the only one who's from here. And I've always taken a little bit of pride in that. But being the only one from here, I'll tell you, ain't always been like this. And it's a good thing, what everybody up here's been doing. I think right now is a good time for this to have come about. As we talked about at our retreat, there is a, a pause, not just in our residential development, but a pause of council taking a step, evaluating what we're doing, realigning and taking to the next phase of the roadmap there on the back wall. I know that I'm leaving at a time when we have excellent people, excellent staff, excellent elected officials. And I want to take a minute to speak to just about everybody. I'm unlimited because I don't want to keep everybody here past dinner or last call. And while I know Ken, Angie and Dave, you guys know how much I care about y'all and gonna miss working with you. Annie, you are in the invisible glue that holds all of this together. And we don't, the fact that I never had to worry one bit about when something was due or when something needs to happen, you keep us straight. And you are a huge asset to the city. You, I know we try to celebrate you as much as we can, even if we mention it every week, it wouldn't be enough, the hard work that you do. And so thank you. I'm really glad we got to work together. Joelyn here is a living legend in Cherokee County, Canton.
Still living.
Still. Keep it up. A living legend. Uh, growing up, Joelyn, as a, as a child in this county, I knew the important work you were doing to help people. And to sit here next to you and do the kind of work, it's been an honor. I'm glad to work with you. Dwayne, you're not a living legend. But I'm glad you're here. Now, when we, when you came on council, you filled the gap that we needed, that engineer's mind, that analytic musicianship. We needed it. I'm glad to count you as a friend. I'm glad that we're here. I'm gonna make my way all the way around, so y'all get ready. Bill, you and I have worked in how many different boards and commissions throughout this city? I've watched you for years, looked up to you, I've argued with you a little bit. But this role is where I see you, you as mayor, as a cheerleader for this city. Somebody who is out there at every event, taking the selfies, putting up the videos. I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get choked up. You are the person that helps keep, keep the drum beating as we move forward. And I don't figure we'll probably see each other again on the board someday. But it's been great to work with you. Think back to our first time, I think on the Arts Commission. Gosh, a lot of time, a lot of time coming, a lot of progress happening. Sandy the same way. Started out with the Arts Board.
It's okay to skip me.
I'm not gonna skip you. I'm not gonna skip you at all. Arts Board. And while you and I may not always agree on everything, we always agree on putting this environment and the people around us. Just like today when you talked to this, the folks from Schneider about making sure that, that picnic tables could be ADA accessible. Having somebody with that focus and that heart is what this city needs as we attract more people. Proud to work with you.
You too.
Sean, who's become about a best friend on Main Street, ward mate, watched him come up with having such a heart for people and your focus towards the housing issues, one of the biggest issues we have facing the city, whether folks agree with it or not. It's a fact. And your tireless efforts to help make it better for people. Your ability to sit and listen to people who are absolutely wrong in their facts and still try your best to help them to understand where they're wrong and why they need to care about others. It's a talent. I'm a better person for serving with you. Brooke, Ms. Schmidt?
Ms. Brooks.
Ms. Brooks? No disrespect to anybody else here, but you are the hardest working person on this council. You are the hardest working person. You are out there every day and we share some office space. And I hear it all day long with Brooke on the phone, talking to people, people who are not nice. People who are sending you messages that are not friendly and you're still going out of your way to help them. Still going out of your way to get them the answer, even though they didn't come nicely, they didn't come helpfully and they didn't do any research of their own. And they probably used your wrong about three times in their message. You've, you go out there and work for them every day and I'm better for being. You've, you go out there and work for them every day, and I'm better for being on council with you, and I appreciate you. Bobby, you don't get skipped just because you're an attorney. That's right. When I started practicing here, I mean, I already knew about you. Of course, I didn't know what attorneys did when I wanted to go to law school, and I don't know that I knew much more when I came out. You've always set the bar for professionalism and knowledge, and I would tell you that I would like to think that I've, oh, when I get to be a really good attorney and I know what I'm doing, I'll be more like Bobby Dyer, and I'll be able to have the knowledge and... I'm still not there. I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you keep it all in your head, I don't know how you herd the cats the way you do. But I'm impressed by you, and as a lawyer, I appreciate all the work you do here. It may not be able to be appreciated across the board, but I appreciate it, and I'm proud to have had this time with you. The sartorial genius in the corner, wearing what's got to be the ugliest jacket I've ever seen.
He may be right.
Billy, you are a superstar. And if anybody here doesn't believe me, go to any municipal event in this state or any other and mention that you're from Canton, and Billy Peppers, they're going to say, "You've got Billy Peppers." I know we're not in the market buying and selling people, but I think we could have sold you for a whole lot. We were a baseball team, you'd be a high-dollar person, hot stove right there. The fact that when I came to you yesterday to let you know about this appointment, you, you told me congratulations, and the very next words out of your mouth were, "Well, this is how we'll have to approach it." You already had a process, we've never had to do this before, but you already had an idea. The dis- the diligence you have for the city, and I don't know how you find the hours to do all the other amazing things you do for the community, but the amazing things you do for this city will never, we could triple your pay, it wouldn't be enough, that account for the hours and time you put here. And you do it because you want to. You could go somewhere else, I'm sure, but the fact you love Canton and you want to be here, and you spend the hours after hours from the ball field in the middle of the night, making sure that we're all prepared, it's amazing, I'm privileged to work here. Now, I'll stop talking, because I'm, I held it together, I didn't think I would. But I just want to say I appreciate all of you. Yeah, if there's anything I can do to help, you'll let me know, and I'm never too far away. And, uh, I know that with whatever's coming up, this is a team that can get it done, so I'm proud of all of you.
Thank you, Councilor Carlin.
And now, if Bobby will tell us about how to replace me, that'd be great.
Well, first, let's, let's be clear, this is effective January one?
January first, yes, sir.
Well, if something comes up between now and then, you're still in the council?
Still here, that's right.
Call Willow in the holidays.
That's right.
And you'll recall, we amended the charter, the legislature approved our, the charter that included a new process when a vacancy is created. So there'll be a vacancy as of January first. A city council will appoint a, or appoints a person to fill the seat until, it's really, you're appointed for the rest of the term, unless there's an election where the seat's not up. So there will be an election in November twenty twenty-three, that'll be for the remainder of the term.
That's correct.
So it'll be on the general election in November. So you'll be appointing from January to November. They'll take offices upon certification of the results, so if only one person qualified, it would be earlier.
Sure, and then they would serve out the rest of the term.
And then run in your normal course, right.
Definitely, so we'll, we'll make sure that that information gets out there, and council will, uh, uh, determine how to proceed, um, in our first January meeting, but, uh, Councilor Carlin, we want to wish you well in your new position, we're, we're proud of you, uh, we know you will serve well in that position, and we want to thank you for not only your kind words, but your contributions, uh, uh, to, uh, the city and to the citizens, uh, in your service. Anyone who steps up to serve the citizens, uh, deserves a, a round of applause, but to do it so well and so eloquently, we, we appreciate that. Understand it was not an easy decision, but, uh, I know it's the right decision for you, and that's, uh, you have our full support on that, so... But thank you, and, uh, appreciate everything that you've done, so, thank you. So, that, I will, I've got a, just a few things to cover quickly tonight. We do have, um, some openings coming up on our boards and commissions, uh, at the beginning of the year. Um, council, uh, Annie has sent out the, the, the list, uh, of all of our boards and commissionings. We have people that, uh, we have terms ending and terms that have ended, um, and so I'm just going to review these real quickly, the ones, uh, the boards and the openings that we have coming open, so, uh, I've sent out an email, so council can be considering these, uh, um, over the break. The goal would be to bring some nominations forward, uh, our first meeting in January, and then, uh, making new appointments at the second meeting, me- meeting in January, so these, uh, boards and commissions can continue their great work into the new year. So, um, just quickly, on the Board of Appeals, uh, we have terms who have, have ended or will be ending, uh, on, on December thirty-first, would be David Johnson, Louis Smith, Karen Randall and Allison Christo. Um, the Canton Building Authority, terms ending with, uh, which are four-year terms, Barry Bishop, Mary, uh, Mike Chapman and Bob Riley. Canton Development Authority, uh, everyone on that board, um, their terms have ended, it's a four-year term. Um, I know we've talked about whether we would, uh, appoint new terms, so that's council, something we can discuss, consider, or would you just, we use that authority when we have a project, uh, uh, and we, we need them, uh, to execute certain authorities. But, uh, all the terms on that Development Authority have, have ended or will be ending, uh, twelve thirty-one, Jeff Brown, Bob Riley, Bill Kent, Mike Chapman, John Wilson, Aaron Ingram and Louis Klein. Canton Housing Authority, we have one, uh, uh, board member, terms ending is Meg Rogers. Canton Main Street Board, we have, uh, some terms ending, Ray DeLuca, Jeff Brown and Jamie Foreman. And then on Historic Preservation Commission, we have two, uh, members whose terms ending, Neil McGruder and Bill Teasley. And then Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Board, uh, we have, um, uh, three members that have left that board, um, Jane Shelnut, John Johnson and Blake Ellett. So we have three openings on that board. Actually have two, uh, council appointments that we, uh, I want to make tonight and go ahead and ask for council approval on that board, because the board, uh, is, has work to do. We, we heard, uh, some of the interim work that's being done, but, uh, the wor- the board's doing great work and, and they haven't been able to meet because they haven't had a quorum, um, but we'd like them to begin, um, meeting as soon as possible at the beginning of the year. And so we have, uh, a new appointment, uh, um, from Ward Three by Ms. Schmidt of Wendy Millen, and then a new appointment from Ward Two by Mr. Tolan of Jared Unger. And... So I would like to, um, ask, uh, if there are any, uh, I would like to ask, is there any, uh, comments or discussion about those two appointments? If not, I'd like to ask for council approval on those.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Awesome.
Mayor, could I just interject on diversity and inclusion? I don't think you mentioned that Kathy Strom has resigned from that.
I didn't, she wasn't indicated on there, but, but she has resigned, uh, that, so we will be, meaning, meaning, filling that position. So we do have one, one opening there, so thank, thank you, Ms. Wilson, for calling it out, so... I did want to announce that I'll be giving the annual State of the City at our meeting on January sixteenth, so, um, we all have that to look forward to, so... Uh, but a lot of great things to, to talk about, not only that it's accomplished this past year, but I think more exciting things to, to, to talk about are things that we have planned coming in, in Phase Two of our roadmap, and really great, exciting things happening in, 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 uh, twenty twenty-three, so... And I, I just, I, I don't want to go over what Mr. Carlin said so eloquently, but I just wanted to, to, to say at our last meeting, and, and, uh, Mr. Peppers mentioned, uh, to, to thank everyone for a really great year. I'm just so proud of this city. It's a, it's a gift to live here, it's a gift to serve here, uh, it's a gift to work with this team, um, on a daily basis. It's a gift to have the, the support that we have from our staff, uh, and, uh, it's a gift to have the passion from our citizens who, who love living in Canton and love, who love now using that hashtag "the coolest small town in America" and, and really mean it, which is so, which is, which is, which is just so, um, so refreshing and warming. But, uh, I want to wish, you know, all of our citizens, um, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and everything in between, uh, and on both sides and both edges, so, on the fringes of that, and, and for, wish, um, that everyone would just keep in mind those in our community and our city who, who are not, uh, as fortunate as all of us are, who are in need, uh, who have needs, big and small, and, uh, you can find generosity in your, in your heart and resources to help those who, who need help in our community in any way, and sometimes it's just a pat on the back and a hug and some encouragement. And sometimes it's just listening to them and, and agreeing to disagree and doing it with grace, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, or invocation, uh, which is a word I think we could always use, a concept we could all use a lot more of. But, uh, I wish you all grace, uh, for this holidays and Merry Christmas, and thank you for a wonderful year in our city, and, uh, I couldn't be more excited about the year to come. And, uh, with that, I'll ask for, uh, to adjourn our last meeting of the year, so...
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.